You're all set, Chairman?
Good afternoon. My name is Raymond Skinner, Chairman of the DCHA Stabilization and Reform Board, and I'm calling this meeting to order. This is our regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority, being held today, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting is being held via WebEx video conferencing, and the board is here in person. This time is now one oh two P M. As we start each meeting, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to allow time for some personal reflection. Thank you. So this is our regular monthly meeting, and we have invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website. Or those who would just like to view the meeting can do so live via the DCH website linked to our Facebook Live page. The Board of Commissioners welcomes constituent input on matters of public concern and offers you today an opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of this meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete its business. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive, conduct, or loud, threatening, or abusive language during the meetings. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from the virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violation of the rules may result in your being barred from speaking at future meetings. We appreciate your your interest in today's matters and thank you in advance for abiding by these rules of conduct. At this time, I would like to ask for a roll call. Vote if you have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Present.
Commissioner Burbridge?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Clay? Commissioner Silla?
Present.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Present.
Thank you. Mister Chair, you have eleven commis-- I'm sorry, ten commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes of the October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Commissioners. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October eleventh meeting.
Show move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved as presented. So the the agenda, you you may have noticed the agenda for today's meeting is a little different from what we've shown in the past. We actually added an item which says committee reports. In the past, we had some committee committees to report and present resolutions. So going forward, what we'll do is at each meeting, we'll have a committee report and an opportunity for committees to present appropriate resolutions that they've vetted. So just to remind everyone, we have four standing committees. We have the Committee on Budget, Audit, and Finance, which is chaired by Commissioner Reed. The Committee on Capital Projects, which is chaired by Commissioner Murphy. The Committee on Operations and Administrative Services chaired by Commissioner Jones. And the Committee on Resident Services, which is chaired by Commissioner Blackson. So for today's meetings, there are actually no resolutions for consideration of the board. The other change in in the agenda is at the bottom of the agenda, we added a section which I like to call Commissioners' Time, and this is just with the an opportunity for commissioners to to raise any issues that they may have concerns about, or also even to ask questions of the staff on on issues that they are concerned about. So with that said, at this time, I'd like to introduce our new, our very new Executive Director, Mister Keith for the Executive Directors' Report.
So, first of all, thank you, Chairman Skinner. And I'm not even new anymore after--
You've been here a week.
No questions here, man. I'm all in. So first of all, thank you, all the commissioners, obviously, for, number one, selecting me. Number two, bring me back home, and I'm just excited to be here. I'm not going to give you a traditional executive summary this month. I'll give you one next month, and I'll tell you why. I'd like to make some changes to the format of the board book itself and how we track that and information for you all to make it more uniform, but also to sort of trust me, verify some things that I've discovered during my interviews one-on-ones with senior staff and that kind of stuff, kicking the tires a little bit. So just forgive me for this month, but I was doing a traditional one. I'd like to more talk more about my first five days here. I'm not going to share a whole lot of insight, because some of that stuff, for me, with staff's kind of confidential, and I don't want them to think that I'm exposing them to anything. We are a team, and I want to make sure that I respect that that relationship as we go forward, and we start to build trust with each other. So but I come back every day, right? So that's a good start, you know? But I have been meeting with the senior staff and other relevant staff. Well, I've met with some resident leaders outside of the office. I spent time at his at Bridge since once and twice in the past week. It's so funny, one of the residents said to me the other night at the kickoff for CNI, she said, "Aren't you afraid to be walking out here by yourself at night?" I'm like, "No, darling, I know these streets well." So so it's been a whirlwind, a lot of information gathering, which is needed, to synthesize it all and to begin to strategize as to how we move forward. I have some thoughts in my mind about what I want to do between now and the end of the year. I will come back in the December meeting and share some thoughts with you all about reassigning some functions, realigning some operational things. I will say, in all fairness and out loud, and I've told the staff this, one of the things that I've noticed that I heard before I got here, but actually is true, that staff don't coordinate as much as they probably should. And I've been having those conversations in my one-on-ones with them about working together and bringing them all together, particularly so that we can become more efficient in what we do and and better serve the residents. So I'm excited about some of the feedback and and the feeling that I'm getting. Obviously, we will be probably building more capacity amongst the staff. Some people have announced resignations, and we've begun to fill some positions with people that I believe have the capacity to be able to move us forward. And with that, I want to first introduce Nicole Whitcliff, who's my Deputy Executive Director. Little about Nicole, I met Nicole about five years ago. When I first got to Alexandria, one of my goals was to reposition and redevelop the portfolio, and Nicole was a subject matter expert for HUD, and so she was working with us. I dropped like thirteen applications on the SAC office, right? They were sitting there going, "Dude, slow down." And I told her when they came to see me, I said, "Listen," I said, "I want to be the face of this." And me and my team got together, and we and we put all of our properties in. And so Nicole was sort of navigating us through all of this, and actually, she helped me not only get the the PBVs or TPVs for the for the LaDray Senior High Rise, but also she worked with us to allow me to flip my condos, because they wanted water. I don't know if you guys remember during the interview, they wanted water. And so what we did is we talked to her and said, "Listen, nothing says I can't do it," right? So that's what you always want to be like. Nothing says I can't do it, I'm going to do it. So she worked with the SAC office and Jane Hornstein and got us approval to rehab the condos and flip them from the public housing subsidy to to market rate vouchers, and so it increased my my cash flow by like three, three hundred percent. So so Nicole is here. I think we sit around, her bio, she has a background in real estate, finance, everything. And so she sort of runs me at Alexandria, so she's going to be here to hopefully lend her expertise and especially with her relationship with HUD, I think is extremely important, and her real estate background and finance background. You know, she she keeps me in a good space, so.
So welcome, Nicole.
Thank you.
Second piece of it is, obviously, Jenna resigned before I got here, but you always believe in promoting from within, because I think that builds morale, particularly when you can identify talent that you believe can rise to the occasion. And I've known Alithia for a long time, and I've always admired her professionalism and and the way she carried herself. And I always felt like, one day I was telling staff yesterday, my staff meeting, I said, "Listen, when I started here, I started HR, but that was for a reason, because Gilmore needed me to handle the all of the labor relations activity and help him rebuild the agency, because I had had experience on the VC government side." But I was telling staff, I said, "It's funny, because sometimes when people look at me and go, 'Oh, he was an HR guy,'" as if all of a sudden now that's a throwaway skill. But actually, it's actually the foundation upon how you lead, because HR touches everything. And when you think about it from that global standpoint, you know, because I used to be ashamed of it for a while, to be frank with you. But as I got older, I started realizing, "No, no, man, this is a skill set, man. It works for you." And so and and I feel like I'm a talent of a talent evaluator as well because of it. And I always saw potential in in Alithia, I really did. And so when I got the opportunity to do it, I figured, you know what? I think it's a great move. I'm excited for her. She's excited to do it. I think that she'll grow into this role and and do a wonderful job. And more importantly, the staff was so excited to see it happen, right? And it's all about building that morale back and letting people know that, hey, guess what? I'm not here to run a bunch of people out of here. I'm actually here to build people up. And so with that, I'm a new, I'm a new Chief of Staff, Alithia McNair. And I have one more announcement in terms of a hire, just so you guys know. I know Commissioner Murphy can appreciate this as well as probably Rachel too, right? Is that I've gotten a commitment from a woman named Allison Bird to be our Communications Director. Allison has a long history of journalism, as well as working with a marketing firm. That's how I met her. She's currently a reporter in Atlantic City. She graduated from the Northwestern Journalism School, School of Journalism. So Allison is well-respected in the industry and something that we definitely need going forward. And so I just want to put that out there. She starts on December the twelfth. And as we go forward, I'll update you all on any kind of activities and actions. But I normally save that for executive sessions, so we'll have to make sure that we put those and announce those during the board meeting, so that that way we can sit and talk a little more in detail about that, as well as other confidential matters that I think need to be vetted to the board first before we present it to the public. So outside of that, let's see here, what else do I have for you all? I had a conversation with HUD yesterday about the HUD report. So I think now we have a clear direction as to how we're going to be responding to them on a regular basis. Laura Davis and I talked briefly after initial meeting yesterday. So I think she felt very comfortable about her and our conversation about how we're going to now track all of this, because that's one of the priorities. I want to make sure we keep it in front of us to take care of it. So outside of that, again, obviously, the board book change is something that I'm looking forward to. And also, I'd like, to be frank, I'd like to reduce the board book a little bit. That's that's a huge book. And I see that the minutes take up most of the book, or a lot of the book, at least half of it. But where I come from, even though the transcript will still be there and available for people to vet and review and and obtain, we summarize our minutes. And I think I'd like to move to summarizing the minutes, but still allowing it to be part of the board book as a tab or an appendix, so people can see the full transcript if they want to. But I want to kind of reduce the actual--
I appreciate that.
But actually, on that point, though, one of the things that the the interim director introduced, which I think several board members liked, but I invite you to, you know, chime in on this, was having the memo with an update on each department.
Right.
And that was something that we didn't have a lot of visibility into before, and so it was helpful. And I mean, not everyone has to read it, obviously, but at least from my perspective, it was helpful to get it in a concise couple pages of memo for each department.
Well, here's what I'm thinking about doing. So the way I've done it in the past is that we create these these sort of summarized tables that will still capture the pertinent information. There's some people, I mean, and again, what I was going to do was, the various subcommittees, when they meet, will share with you what we're what we're thinking about doing, and you can say, "Hey, listen, I like this format, Keith, or I don't."
Great.
And that way, we get your input, so that that way, whatever we do, when we come back to the next board meeting, you guys will all be satisfied, because you're all chiming in.
That's great. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes.
Sir, will that include kind of your thoughts on summarizing the minutes or the the board discussion? I think from my perspective, the action items, the outstanding questions that require follow-up and things of that nature are really important to highlight, so that we can make sure the dots are connecting from meeting to meeting. So if there's an opportunity to weigh in on what you're thinking about for that summary, I would love to participate in that.
So we'll make a note, and we'll get back to you, let you know. And again, we'll share what what the formats, the format style that we want to use.
Yeah, and there may be, you know, a little back and forth between you and the board--
That's what I want.
--getting to a format that everybody's comfortable.
There you go. I want the feedback and the buy-in, that's all. Also, I think one last thing is, I know government shutdown is looming, right? They're going to shut down. So I did talk with with John, and so we're we're good for a couple of months. Like eight, eight to nine months, which is--
Eight months.
Eight months, yeah, he said. So we'll just hope that it doesn't happen and that they can pass something that will keep us going. But just so you know, I'm quite sure this is probably in people's minds.
So it's November seventeenth?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that's in front of us. So outside of that, if anyone has any questions, like I said, the biggest thing was the board book change, providing you guys with year-to-date financials by property and by operations. So we talked, I talked with the CFO, and he assured me for the December meeting, he assured me that we would have year-to-date financials. I told him, I said, "That's what I live by, and I think that you all should be able to see those, but either by property or by operation and programmatic activity." So.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Jim Dickerson?
Yes, sir.
Your short-term, what's your long-term? Do you have long-term, long-term goals?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked.
Not a short term, you have it all on top of you all of a sudden.
Well, so and and I'm going to take you back to the interview process, right? And Commissioner Reed and I had a conversation about this yesterday. So obviously, I'm going to be having assessments done of of various aspects of the agency. Well, sort of the administrative operational piece of it, the ACVP program, because that's front and center with HUD, as well as the cash cow. And then I'm going to have an assessment done of the portfolio to lay out, to create a comprehensive development strategy for all of the stuff that's out there, that's sitting, and we need to put a plan and a strategy together for that. Also, we'll be looking at the current pipeline of development activity too, so we can give you a better roadmap to where we are with all of those particular properties, the status of them, you know, expectations, that kind of stuff, keep you guys informed. But ultimately, what this is going to do, and what I what I shared with HUD was a recovery. And and recovery plan would be like a roadmap to recovery, literally. It's probably going to be about a three-year plan. No, we don't, we do like a three-year period.
I'm familiar with recovery.
And so it will lay out a lot of stuff. A lot of stuff will probably be done, completed by the time we get-- so I'm looking to probably have a recovery plan completed by the end of February first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. And that will be our roadmap, for number one, for the board to follow it and measure our performance as an agency, for for the world to see from a transparency standpoint. And they'll be realistic goals, and it'd be very measured, and we'll be reporting every quarter on deliverables. And that way, everybody can see it. I think everybody will be able to appreciate it, and more importantly, follow it as we make progress, so. Yes.
Director, I'm curious about like your template for assessments. Is this something that you've used in your prior experience, or--
Yes.
And do we, can we have an opportunity to look at your assessment tools, give you some feedback based on our experience here?
Commissioner, let me tell you something. I will vet it all through you guys, because I need your buy-in. And more importantly, I need your criticism, right? I want to be able to say, you guys have expertise too in various areas. So I would be, I would be foolish not to present it to you guys, say, "Give me some feedback on this. What do you think about this particular area?" You know, and you may be able to give me some insight, you know, from your standpoint or your experience. So now, that will be vetted through the board.
So so just to to piggyback on that and and make it clear that it's the board's responsibility to do at least an annual assessment of the executive director. And so I have some ideas about a a template or instrument, evaluation instrument that that we can use. So ultimately, it's, it has to be a partnership between the board and the executive director. You know, we'll lay out, you know, some things that we think from the board perspective are are critical, and we want to measure and buy. And then you have some ideas. And again, as I said previously, there'll be a little back and forth, and ultimately, we'll end up with with an assessment vehicle that works for all of us.
And the good thing about this whole assessment, as well as a recovery plan, a lot of what you guys may want to measure me on will probably be in the plan anyway.
Right.
And with the deliverables as well. So we make it easy for everybody.
I'm going to throw you a softball, because the answer's obvious, but somebody has to ask. I appreciate the recovery plan. I also know that over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of really good work done to position us to move forward on certain things, most notably occupancy and the urgent needs campaign. And we're all, you know, one of the things you're going to-- this board is very focused on those numbers, and where are we on units? Where are we on occupancy? Where are we on the waiting list? You know, those kinds of things. So while you are developing a longer-term recovery plan and a longer-term vision, how are you going to also continue, you know, in the shorter term, making progress on the tactical steps that everybody-- not everybody, but the key, the key players on the team are taking to make sure that we're seeing improvement? Because I think, you know, the the city is used, this is now, you know, what, the third, fourth director in a not-long period of time. And so I think there's some anxiety, I hear it, and I bet others do, that it's sort of like, okay, every time we get a new director, we got to start from scratch. I don't think we're in that position now. And so I want to give you a chance to sort of talk about that.
So if you remember, I mentioned the fact that when I do the new board book, we're going to summarize information. I just want to kick the tires a little bit and verify what we've been presenting to the-- So we're going to continue to capture the the progress and the work that's being done there. It's almost like, obviously, saying, flying the plane while you're rebuilding it, right? So we know we got to continue to fly the plane and keep the trains running. And in the board book, in the format of the board book, will allow you guys to continue to see the progress that's being made on a monthly basis. So that's how it'll be tracked, so you will be able to see it every month to see whether progress is being made or whether progress is not being made. And you get to ask questions, say, "Hey, Keith, you know what?" Perfect example, and I was putting out the red collection sitting ninety-nine percent. I'm sitting there going, "Okay, in what world?" Right? So I'm just being honest, right? So I'm saying, "Okay, so now I start asking questions. What does this really mean? How does this work?" I know people pay rent late all the time, too. So you tell me ninety-nine percent, I'm sitting there going, "I'm cash flowing," like, you know what, right? But I know I'm not. But 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 those are the kind of things I have to kick the tires on and and come up with a format to to allow you guys to see it in the board book in a way that's sort of a high level, right? So that we can keep it moving, reduce the board book a little bit, but you'll still get the critical information on a daily from a day-to-day operational standpoint that you'll be able to look at and evaluate.
And and all those things that you mentioned, Commissioner Murphy, are part of our response to HUD.
Yeah.
So as we're, you know, trying to get those issues with HUD closed out, it's going to respond to all the the issues you mentioned.
Yes.
Again, so we're we're hearing from you what you're going to provide for us. What do you need from us to help make this a success and to make this work?
Just just your honesty, right? I mean, listen, I mean, again, board members are our resource. And 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 I just want you guys to be a resource for me, you know? I don't need yes people. I just want people to be very honest with me about, hey, where do we stand? You know, what do you like? What do you not like? Because we can't improve if I don't know what's really on your mind. But you also, you guys also have a lot of expertise that you can give to me. That's why I want to share stuff with you guys. Say, "Listen, give me your feedback on this. Tell me what you think. Do you like it this way? Do you not like it that way? What about the stuff that I'm seeing right here? And, you know, based on what you know, being in the city, what do you think?" And because the other thing is too, I have to keep you guys informed, because you guys live in the city too. And as Commissioner Skinner knows, he knows everybody, so people are coming to him. And I want to make sure you guys are are armed with good information and 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 about the strategy going forward, about the information that we're putting out, so that that way you guys can feel confident about responding to people in in the public when you're out in the public, so.
Right, thank you. That's a critical point, because we actually kind of serve as ambassadors for the agency. So, you know, as as we talked right before the board meeting, I'm out and about in the city, and people are hitting me with questions. So I need to be armed with the appropriate information, so I can respond.
I was walking to my car the other day. Somebody said, "You know Mr. Skinner?" I said, "Yeah, I do." He said, "I need to see him." I said, "I'll see him at the board meeting tomorrow." Let him know, right?
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so we're going to move on. The next item on the agenda is resident testimony. So each resident will have three minutes to provide testimony on on whatever issues are on your mind. And we have a list of residents who've already signed up.
Cool. We're starting with Juanita Louis Rich. Is she here on our website? It's Louis Rich. I'll continue. Donald Tapscott? Donald Tapscott?
One of the Riches here.
Oh, yes. Okay, go ahead. Continue, please. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm I'm here to ask questions about the local voucher and the federal voucher. And like Mrs. Skinner said, I need to be informed as well as he does. I want to understand what's the difference, because what I'm getting is that the local voucher, which I don't even know how I got, because I was looking to get a federal voucher. What's the difference in the money in the local voucher and the federal voucher?
You want to take that?
Sure.
Good afternoon. This is Hamaray Gabrias. So the the money is actually not any different, but we can talk directly. I can follow up with you after the meeting, just to answer any particular questions that you might have.
Okay.
Is run very similarly.
Okay, you just say similar. So there is a difference.
There's a, for the local voucher, your initial eligibility, the income threshold is a little bit lower than the federal program. But otherwise, the rent determination process, the contract rent, so all of the leasing and the inspections is all, is all the same.
Okay. All right, I understand that part.
Afterwards, to talk specifically about your, about your situation.
Okay, I appreciate that. I really needed someone I could talk to. And now this question I wanted to bring to the Executive Director, and I understand you're new, so congratulations. We need, my, the local voucher, I understand, comes through DHS.
You're a mute? Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Okay.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're back.
Okay, and my understanding is from my case manager is that they can't contact DCHA, I can't contact DCHA when we have questions. So we need a contact person that everybody can go to, because you're the ones that is administering the money, the the basic specifics. I think Ms. Hardeman is in this meeting. And we've we've she's been with me through this whole process to even get my voucher. But when we have questions, it's hard to reach someone at DHA because you're the one that's at the top of the tier, that's giving out the money, making the rules, administering the vouchers, and telling us what their approved rents are. And what's happening is when we sent in a packet, now I'm learning, when we send in a packet to be approved, it's it's taken forever to get that approval back. Because undoubtedly, there's somebody there that's not doing this thing in a timely manner. And landlords, they want somebody in their house immediately. And when you take too long, they give up on you. They, I mean, voucher holders, federal and local have been stigmatized forever. So now you you got something else on our backs because they'll say, okay, well, they got a voucher. I can get somebody, you know, in the military. I can get somebody that's got a job. They don't care about the guaranteed money piece. They want somebody in that house because whoever, most landlords have a mortgage that they have to pay. So they want to get that paid as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Whether you're.
I'll reach out to you this afternoon.
Yeah, we we have your information. Someone will reach out to you this afternoon.
Uh, next is Octavia Dawson. Ms. Dawson, oh, I'm sorry. I'll call Mr. Tapscott. And if you're dialed in, you can press star six to unmute. Okay, I'll move on. Uh, Octavia Dawson. Octavia Dawson. Okay, I'll continue. Ms. Terry Acker. Again, if you're dialed in, you can press star six to unmute. Patricia Bishop. Ms. Bishop, we know you well. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, Ms. Bishop.
Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the new director.
Thank you so much.
Always. First and foremost, I am the good trouble. And once again, I'm here to get continue to get in good trouble. I would like to have a meeting with you, the G Rad concerns about the green leaf.
Okay.
Redevelopment. I would like for all information that was forwarded.
Hello. Hello.
I'm sorry, I'm going to because that person is interrupting.
Hello, hello.
This should continue.
Okay, thank you. Yes, with all.
Hello.
Please take her and I'll.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Dawson, let's go ahead and continue with you and then we'll come back to Ms. Bishop.
Yes, ma'am, hello.
Please proceed.
Ms. Dawson, how you doing?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm trying to, I'm I I am really sharp because it's been years since I've been in 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 Detroit Park with all the shooting and the and and kids getting shot. My apartments, I've been here almost eight years. And when and I got custody of my daughter, I don't even know what I'm in here under. I can't get nobody at PHAD. I can't get no answers for nothing on top of my daughter getting threatened and bullied for the first four years I was here. My uh, my daughter's fingers got messed up. My my oldest daughter, and I'm just saying, I'm ready to leave out of here. I don't, I got police reports, I done the mediation, I done done everything. My children to the point they they don't even want to be, they don't even want to come home no more. Now, my daughter is 20. I put it for upgrade. Every time I recertify, I put it for upgrade for a two bedroom, and I haven't gotten it yet. And I've been here since 216. And 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 my property managers, they were aware. And you get property managers like every 90 days around here. So you really can't get nothing done. And y'all left me leaving me in a situation where I got to protect my 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 children. But I'm not going to try and I'm not trying to live nowhere where I can't get nothing done. And since I've been here, I had my my apartment, I have mouses, rats, roaches, everything. And when you go to put a virtual work order in, you can't get it because they tell you it's something about emergency. Corona is over. That shit is over. People that died in this building. And they trifling, ain't nobody, none of these housing projects is living up to what y'all book wrote. Black and white stands on its own. And y'all not living up to that. Y'all even people in the dirtiest trifling situation, don't want to move them, don't want to do nothing, leave them stuck. Whereas though if I do something to somebody, when I'm trying to do something to my kids and machetes and stuff getting pulled out on me and ain't nobody trying to move me, they tell me that it don't want enough information. What else doesn't want enough information when your child got to go somewhere, go through this, getting bullied, getting rocks threw at her? And I'm calling the police, I'm calling the police, I'm calling the police, getting police reports, and I still ain't got nothing done. What good does that do on me?
So Ms. Dawson, we'll have a property manager director reach out to you so we can sit down and talk.
That property management, I don't want no, if I can't talk to one of y'all to see one of y'all, it's going to go on another letter. I'm going to the news because for the last five, six years, I've been forced to stay somewhere where I don't want to stay. I'm going to the news. Yeah, I'm saying why y'all recording? Because y'all leave me stuck where I got to I got to fit for my life around here and fit for my children's life. And I shouldn't have to be stuck in those situations when I did all the paperwork, born for enough for me to move. If I feel like my life is threatened and my children's life, I've been threatened. My children's got rocks threw at them. My daughter done messed her finger up, come down here to help her oldest, her little baby sister. And my daughter been going through this since from 12 and she 20 now. She don't even want to stay home no more. She stopped going to school and everything.
Ms. Dawson, Ms. Dawson, I hear your concern. So Ms. Heath, who's the director of property management, myself will meet with you to talk about your situation, all right?
Thank you, Ms. Dawson.
Uh, Ms. Bishop, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Go ahead and continue, Ms. Bishop, we're sorry.
Yes, I would like for the new director to have all information that was on Green Leaf that was discussed at the Board of Commissioners meeting and with the developers and with what what's going on. So when he meet me, he have every letter that was sent, every promise, every statement that was given by the previous director or chairpersons when they had that position. Because something has to go to stop what is being done to Green Leaf so there can be a change in how things are done with these developers and these um, sit down talks and all that. That's what G Rad wanted to establish in the beginning. We was told, I was told that, oh, my people told me to give Ms. Bishop everything she asked for, but I haven't got it. I asked for things, I don't get it. I don't want to disrespect anyone. All I want is for the best, for the tenants of Green Leaf to not be displaced. Keep your promises, keep your words. Because there is a record that stated a change is going to come. And I want this change, this change is needed to make sure that nobody else gets to be treated like this while they are living in housing property. While any type of negotiation is going on back and forth. First and foremost, the people who represent the tenants should be heard, should be listened to. When I ask for stuff in black and white, I don't need papers to be given to me in blue and white on a black and white paper. This is the games that we feel that those being played with us. A letter came from years ago from Charles Allen written himself, Bill First. Nobody has respected that because that's what we requested in the beginning to move forward. So therefore, no more of the same old, same old can continue to go on or there are going to be some meetings in another room concerning Green Leaf. I am not raising my voice, I am not hitting on the table, but I am dead serious. Enough is enough. If you want to respect the tenants more than you want to respect yourself and HUD, we are here for a sit down. We don't want to have to keep protesting, keep getting our blood pressure raised up, keep getting sick behind. We are not being heard. Thank you. I appreciate it and look forward to the meeting soon.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. I'll be in touch.
Uh, next is Ms. Shante Ha. Ms. Ha, are you there?
Yes, thank you. Um, Psalms, chapter 90, verse 17. Let the favor of the Lord our God be upon us and establish the work of of our hands upon us. Yes, establish the work of our hands. Good afternoon to everyone. I'd like to extend a warm heartfelt welcome to our new executive director, Mr. Pettigrew. And I want to personally thank you for taking on such a task as DCHA has been wreaking havoc upon itself and the residents in which it governs, which leads me to my testimony. Many of my Park Morton residents continue to reach out to me about matters. They themselves do not often testify out of fear of retaliation, intimidation, defamation, or threats of eviction from DCHA, sad to say, has become their quote unquote new normal for them. I will bullet point the list of complaints I've recently received, starting with maintenance at Park Morton is still being done in an untimely manner according to the residents who remain residents both on site and off site. I have difficulty contacting their case managers. Case managers do not return phone calls, emails, or texts. Residents are being contacted by about their names coming up on the voucher list, but they were relocated from Park Morton with vouchers. Again, residents are trying to inquire about this but are unsuccessful in their attempts to receive answers. The Starboard refuses to answer any inquiries of the people directly at the Board of Commissioners meeting or by email when testimonies have been submitted. Many of us are still waiting an extensive amount of time to get answers to the same questions that are asked month after month at these recorded meetings. Many residents have pointed out that I'm the president of the Resident Council and I should be in attendance to many of the meetings that DCHA has had with them. Resident owned businesses such as those who were invited to the DCHA 2021 Virtual Vendor Expo should be a priority for be priority vendors for DCHA. These business owners are making their businesses, marketing their businesses for success. DCHA can assist by offering resident owned businesses opportunities for advancement through contracts, grants, and business referrals. In conclusion, there is much work to be done to cure DCHA of its problematic entities that infringe upon or impede upon the true amelioration of its residents. And as I close, I would like to say thank you. I am Ms. Shante Ha, Missi Pukku, 1 Corinthians 1533. Do not be deceived. Bad company ruins good morals.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson.
Thank you. Uh, next is Linda Brown. Ms. Linda Brown. Ms. Brown, are you there?
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Linda Brown. I live in Green Leaf Senior Building in Ward Six. I want to extend my welcome to the new executive director and good evening and good afternoon to everyone else. I'm calling about two things. Um, the first is I live on the ground floor of Green Leaf Senior Building. And the rodents are trying to come inside the building. So I need someone to come and look at my apartment and find where they can plug holes and put up these boards against the rodents coming inside my apartment. That's the first thing. And the other thing is I like to ask, when are we going to get clear communication of what is going to happen with Green Leaf? Um, what are they going to do? Uh, when are they going to do it? And how they going to do it in a timely manner? Because it's important to me because I have a daughter, an adult daughter who is disabled. So I need time to plan and figure out what our next moves are. So I would appreciate if when we're having these meetings that I be notified and the building, all the residents be notified in a timely manner so that we can plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maya Travilla.
Hello, um, I just have some questions regarding like the qualifications for landlords, specifically in Berry Farms. Um, there's a lot of residents in a few particular buildings that have some complaints about um, maintenance and upkeep that aren't being taken care of. And I just want to know like as well what those regulations for inspections are. There's been a there's been a few instances where gas line was cut, residents weren't notified about it. And they didn't know about it until they had to evacuate. There's locks and gates that aren't being fixed that residents don't feel safe behind. Um, and residents just aren't receiving updates regarding the status of their buildings. And some are not happy with their the amount of money they have to pay.
So Mr. Yeah, um, Mr. Yeah, so um, as far as I know, folks have been relocated from Berry Farms. So where are you now? Where are you?
I'm speaking on behalf of a friend of mine who lives in Berry Farms.
Okay, but. So there's there are no residents at Berry Farm there. So I'm not sure what the what the issue is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Donna Towns. Ms. Towns, are you there?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Towns.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Donna Town. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Donna Town.
She's in the same rooms, Paula Matthews.
Ms. Towns.
Hello?
Ms. Towns, please.
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I'm I was calling to um, to again speak about the Park Morton concerns in which I've been going through since 2018. And I would like to begin with, at this time, I've been served legal documents regarding recertification and um, um, legal document, another legal document concerning a rent balance. Um, I don't believe, okay, so I'm going to start. And on 2017 to 2018, Ms. Barnes was on sick leave. And upon her return, I presented my daughter's lease and she was removed from the lease. But the charges from May 2017 to March 2018 was not reversed. Um, my daughter can't pay rent here and pay rent in her new apartment. So that's an issue in which I'm dealing with regarding um, the legal issue about the rent charges. And then in 27 and then 2018, um, Ms. Diallo became manager. And again, when my daughter was removed, okay, so Ms. Diallo became manager in August, September 2018. When she became manager, she should have checked to all tenant, all tenants accounts. And with that balance, um, I should have been informed of the balance. I would have been within the grievance period of a year. My daughter was removed in um, March 2018 and but she never brought that to my attention. And but she never brought that to my attention. So in twenty nineteen, I was recertified along with the balance. And at that time, that was her second opportunity to bring it to my attention of the balance. And my tenant ledger would reflect the balance. And also, my tenant profile would reflect the balance. And my the recertification in twenty nineteen should have been denied, but it wasn't. But now, in twenty twenty, when I was offered, I live at Park Morton, offered different public housing properties to go to different houses, properties, I was denied because of the balance. And then in twenty, in twenty, oh my gosh, I was denied because of the balance. And then then I want to, oh boy, I'm sorry, I have to go back. Okay. I was denied of the balance. And I'm dealing with this issue with I'm thankful that my twenty twenty-three recertification has been processed and completed. But now I have to deal with this balance, which should have been reversed. And the effective date on the interim change report in March twenty eighteen is the effective date of my daughter's removal is May twenty seventeen. So Ms. Barnes and I agreed upon both actions happening, but it didn't happen. I'm disappointed Ms. Diallo didn't bring it to my attention. And I'm thankful that the certification package is done. And I want to move to the DCA, DHA, DCA, DCA termination of my property, of my tenancy in apartment twenty-one.
So so Ms. Towns, Ms. Towns? Can staff follow up with you? Because I mean, we can't resolve your issue here at the board meeting. So you need to talk to a staff person who can work with you. So we'll have someone to follow up. We have information.
Okay, who, who was told? Well, I've been speaking with because the only all I want is a resolution to all in which I've spoken about and the disposal of my property. Thank you.
Right, okay. We will follow up. We'll have someone contact. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Bye-bye. I look forward to a positive resolution.
Ms. Lundrickson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, a good day to you, D.C. Housing Authority Commissioners, and welcome Executive Director Keith Pettigrew. My name is Karen Lundrickson, and I wish you were under different circumstances I am speaking to you about today. I have been a victim of ongoing blatant retaliation by senior-level employees there, and they have been engaging in illegal inappropriate behavior against me. I have a pending request for termination that we saw retaliation on the part of Kalia Payne, the quality assurance manager there. Ms. Payne issued this without any investigation done, and there is no reliable objective evidence to even support this RFP, which the HUD guidelines mandate. Former management here, where I live right here, say emails with all of these false allegations against me, like I ran behind the concierge desk in the lobby, and shockingly, I tried to grab the computer. There's a video surveillance camera in the lobby. I would like to see any type of proof that I did any of this. It is not there because I never did this. Additionally, Ms. Payne incited my current landlord to formally evict me, which they initially filed in D.C. Superior Court. On December fifth, two thousand twenty-two, my current landlord's own attorneys voluntarily dismissed this case. I don't understand how DCHA can come after me for the exact same issues. Any D.C. Superior Court ruling should supersede any informal hearing ruling by DCHA. Additionally, Kalia Payne is a discovery witness in a pending legal matter I have with another public housing agency. I was a voucher recipient there when she worked there, and I even have letters she wrote to me. This is a huge conflict of interest. Furthermore, and equally appalling, is that Rachel Joseph, Lori Bonds, Renisha Buford, and Ms. Payne have been revealing my privileged matters between my attorney and DCHA's Office of General Counsel to these outside third parties, including my current landlord and this other public housing agency. They have also shared my reasonable accommodation letters with my landlord and this other public housing agency. One of these employees, most likely Rachel Joseph, instructed Sherkina Daniels at the DCHA ADA there to call my doctor without any authorization from me, and she was revealing all kinds of personal information about me to the front desk receptionist as to needing further physical evidence. DCHA also forced me to provide further documentation from my doctor, which was not needed for the HUD joint statement and the Fair Housing Act. I was forced to attend a DCHA informal hearing back on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and I had evidence I had submitted, which was a reasonable accommodation letter my doctor had written. And the hearing examiner denied this RA letter without ever even looking at it. Additionally, right before this hearing, the hearing examiner and a DCHA employee were laughing and flirting with each other. This has been an ongoing nightmare for me, you all, with this pending RFP. I also do not understand how the landlord in the D.C. Housing Authority can gang up against the voucher recipient when they're really supposed to be helping the voucher recipient. Mr. Pettigrew, I would like to set up a meeting with you to plead my case as soon as possible. I have been in touch with America Braves about to do as to this. I received yet another hearing notice for Friday, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. My lawyer was not consulted about this either. I have upcoming surgery, and I have been very sick in large part due to all this stress by this pending RFP. My doctor has written a reasonable accommodation letter as to this, and we will be forwarding to you as well. Thank you for hearing me out. And again, I'm really sorry it's not under different circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Tanisha DeVall. Tanisha DeVall. We have another resident, Ms. Tammy Gwen.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, Wayne Waller.
Hello? Yeah, this is Mr. DeVall.
Go ahead, Mr. DeVall.
Um, yes. Good afternoon, good afternoon to everyone. I'm sorry for the loud background, I'm in dialysis. But I have a few concerns. I recently was trying to get like, I just recently did my two thousand twenty-two. I guess my recertification, but I didn't receive it until March of twenty twenty-three. And I've been having issues. My income changed when I did my recertification, and I let Ms. Glover know before I was supposed to pay my rent. And Ms. Glover, she picks and chooses when she wants to respond. It was months I've been trying to get this done. She fixed the new rent for December, but she knew she told me she couldn't go back to fix the old rent because it the paperwork that I had, I was trying to get the paperwork from her for like months now. And I didn't, I was only able to get that paperwork when I attended a meeting with a Ms. Riley at the sister site on, and that was August. And again, she chooses when she wants to correspond with me. I had several other people to reach out to her on my behalf. And the paperwork that I was, I tried to submit was not the correct paperwork, but I'm going through other people that's in the housing program. I also reached out to her supervisor, Mr. Coroma. Like, it was just like the runaround. I asked for a hearing in August on Mr. Jeffrey Tony. He reached back out to me in September, on September the twenty-fifth. And regards to Mrs. Glover's schedule, I never heard anything else. I'm still requesting a hearing because my rent was never fixed. She fixed the new rent, but she refuses to fix the old rent. And then also, like, I didn't understand how she's emailing me at eight o'clock at night about how hateful and how spiteful and how negative I am when like, I don't know you personally, and this is not personal for me. This is just my livelihood, and I have four children. So ultimately, my livelihood is in your hands. Because like, when you not responding, it looks like I'm not on top of my business. And it was just like, I've been asking for a new housing specialist. When she emailed me that negative email, she was like, trust and believe she's going to be off my case, but she's not off my case. Ms. Coroma, I emailed her all the paperwork, letting her see everything. Ms. Glover kept saying I never turned anything in. It was like a back and forth thing. And I just felt like, because it was a back and forth thing, she assassinated my character. She basically called me a liar when it's all in the emails. And it's like now, I'm still in a hole because I'm left to pick and choose whether I pay my electric, my utilities, or pay rent. And I don't think that's it. And I don't understand why, why we can't have their contact information. I've called her several times. It took me a month just to even get her email, not Ms. Glover's email or her telephone number. Like, when you call, you can't even get that.
Someone will follow up with you. And we'll try to get to the bottom of your situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms.
Hi, my name is Terry Acker. You missed me. Will you come back to me?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so I finally got in. Thank you. I'll wait.
Okay, Ms. Acker, you can go ahead and proceed now.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for this honor to be able to talk to you. I'm coming to you talking about the emergency regulations that DCHA has put into effect for what I'm hearing, public housing residents and housing choice voucher residents. I work at Bridge for the City. I'm the senior community organizer there. And I have spoken with many clients that utilize these services. And I've worked with all of the complexes that I've gone under red in the District of Columbia. And it's been my, and I am a voucher holder. It's been my understanding to me, what I say is that you're treating us like secondhand citizens, and it doesn't seem like you care. It seems like the Housing Authority got a bad report from HUD, and they're blaming us with these regulations, okay? For one thing, when you ask everyone to recert either six months or every year, you know, right now, you don't even have the staff to do that. And then when they recertify us, they don't do the calculations of the rent properly. And then now you're changing when we can ask for a grievance from three hundred sixty-five days, a whole year, to just thirty days. And I'm actually in a situation right now where I don't feel like my rent was calculated correctly. And and those thirty days have gone by. And that's a lot of time. And also, the regulation about the three days from thirty days, three days to have a guest in your house and have to report it. I've been sick, and I've had a grandson that has said, Grandma, I'm coming to stay with you. So he really doesn't stay with me, but he has carte blanche. Whenever I'm sick, he's here. He can be here as long as a week when I can't get up off of the sofa. So, you know, then the grievance, okay, the grievances. The community service, what about working folks in the community service situations? You know, it seems like the residents, voucher holders and public housing people were not consulted about this, and we don't want these regulations to be passed. We're at the top of the pendulum. You're supposed to come and talk to us first. It's not all what the mayor says. And I'd like to ask for a meeting of the residents and your commission because we don't know when you're going to open it back up for you to us to come in and talk to you face to face about this. Because people are scared about retaliation and things of that nature to even testify about things. So, you know, I've been trying, but I can't. And then the process of even getting registered and whatnot is very difficult. Also, I have a lot of seniors, and it's hard for them. Okay, I think that's it.
Thanks, Ms. Acker.
All right. So when will you get back to me about when we can have a meeting of the residents and your commissioners about these regulations? And I heard that the date has been changed back to what, the spring? When are they permanently supposed to go into effect? Because it's actually legal for them to be in effect right now. And they're using these on the seniors because they don't know. They're calculating their New Year's rent right now and putting these rules against the people, and it's totally wrong.
So Ms. Acker, someone will contact you tomorrow. Schedule a meeting.
Okay.
Ms. Paulette Matthews. Ms. Matthews, are you there?
How y'all doing? Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good, because I had to go through a way that's not normally the way it goes. But I'm thankful that they have connected me with you guys. I'm actually on the phone for myself and for an individual who I believe is under Ms. Watson that lives at fourteen twenty-five First Street Southwest. And my concern for him and what he came to approach me with is the fact about recertification. When we recertify, do you only just look at the amount of money in which an individual makes? And you don't look at, and this is a DCHA question, and you don't actually look at the sex of the kids that's in the household? The reason why I'm asking this is because he has a daughter who is nine and a son who is eight. And he says that he constantly asks for a transfer or a larger unit, and he hasn't been able to obtain that. And my question is, is that against the law to have a male and a female living in one bedroom? So that's that subject, and I hope that someone will be able to ask when I'm done. The other one is I would like to give a shout out to Ms. Davis and her team and for all the things that they've done for me and also the area manager for where I live at in Northwest. But I'm concerned because I had some pots and pans to be destroyed in my house due to the fact that I had this leakage from my faucet. And when I discovered, when they were trying to say they was going to come, and I went to go pull the pots and pans out because I keep some of them in my stove, so I had no reason to go in that that area, that they were rusty. I was supposed to have a hearing, but they turned around and they changed the hearing date. It's two days in October. I still haven't received one in November. The reason for that is because they denied, they said it was not their responsibility or they didn't cause the problem, and they were not going to reimburse me for my pots and pans. I don't know if this has been thrown to the side because the resident manager is not here or not, but that's part of my concern. And then when I stood here and I think of all the things that's going on, like, I believe it was last Friday night or Saturday, and I can't say exactly where it was coming from, but I know it was at three o'clock in the morning. Over five, over fifty rounds of gunshots were going off in here. And I don't understand the little towers that they have up on the houses. I thought I was told that that's so that they would know where the gunshots were coming from. But the sirens and stuff either never come, or they come forty or fifty-five minutes later. I don't understand if they are able to detect the first shot, how could you have so many rounds to go off without hearing sirens and things of that nature? So far as I'm concerned, I know that everybody's life is at risk, and everybody the same with this gunshot fires going on. But was there even a report of this at all in the community? It might not have been directly within my community, but it was the surrounding communities. So I wasn't hearing everything, but did the Police Department for D.C. Housing Authority even bring that up if they spoke already? And then I'm concerned as well about, and it might sound crazy, but about the Attorney General actually having we have court's hearing with the DCHA for neglect and supposedly we had one. What did we benefit out of it as residents?
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
It's not a thank you situation. It's a question, will any answers be provided for my concerns?
Yeah, we can, we can't provide answers right this minute, but we can follow up with you and provide those answers.
Okay. And I'm having a roting issue. As I sit here and speak, I see them dotting around. But anyway, that's another thing that you'll get back with me too as well. Appreciate you. Thank you. Y'all all have a blessed day.
All right. Okay, so that's the last resident testimony. And now we're going to move on to committee reports. And we're going to start with the committee on Budget. This is the Department of Finance, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. This is Commissioner Reed. At the last meeting that we had, we spent a lot of time talking about our fiscal year twenty. Um, we spent quite a bit of time talking about our fiscal year twenty-one audit. I'm sure many of you know that it's been delayed, uh, just through a lot of data collection.
I've been waiting to speak. Hello, no one's called my name. I'm supposed to speak.
Who is this?
Um.
So we're going to, we're going to get, oh, okay. We have the residents to, to testify first, then we're going to do, uh, these committee reports and then we'll come back for the non-resident testimony. So we haven't forgotten about this.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, at, at our last meeting, I think we have a path forward. I'm looking at our general counsel. Uh, I think we have a path forward to correct, uh, one last remaining item so that we can get our twenty-one audit completed, which will then allow us to really begin in earnest on the FY twenty-two audit. Um, this has been a big concern of all the committee members, just making sure that we can get those documents finalized. We know HUD's been asking about them. We, of course, uh, want them as well. Uh, we should get an update on where we are, I believe, at our meeting next week, um, which will be on November fifteenth. That meeting is a little bit earlier than we normally do, but the reason for that is the, um, budget submissions to the district are due on the twenty-first. And, uh, we wanted to discuss as a committee what DCHA will be submitting in full transparency to me, uh, as the Mayor's Budget Director, uh, the local request, uh, for subsidy. So we look forward to that discussion. We look forward to the audit. We're very excited to hear about the year-to-date actuals and the full migration of the financial system into YARDI. That should allow us now to get more updated and continuous reports. Uh, and I'll turn to my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Murphy, Commissioner Reed, to add anything.
Delighted to hear the progress on the audit.
Yes, me too.
This is Commissioner Skinner. I have a question about the, uh, FY twenty-four budget or, uh, loading it into the HUD system. Uh, I understand there was a delay in that. Um, I had gotten something from our CFO where, um, I was supposed to sign something, uh, in order for it to go into HUD.
Oh, I was not aware of that.
I was told that there was a delay, uh, in the, in the HUD, in HUD allowing us to actually load whatever information we needed into their system.
Okay. I can follow up with the director and the CFO on that because I'm not aware of that issue.
Is, uh, CFO, our CFO?
John.
Right here, right here. Good afternoon, Director. Good afternoon, Commissioner. Uh, yeah, so we, we spoke with HUD. They only had FY twenty-three open in their system. They didn't have twenty-four, which was, uh, our budget that we needed to upload. And, uh, when communicating with them, they said they were planning to open twenty-four in December, which is interesting because the deadline to submit was end of October. Uh, so I spoke with, uh, Field Office and they said they were going to work with someone internally to open it for us. Uh, and I haven't gotten, um, an answer. I did communicate with them recently, but I haven't gotten a definite answer. Once I do and we have the twenty-four open, I'll upload it to their system. And then I will ask you, Chairman, to go ahead and sign it.
So, um, now that we're, what, in the second month of the fiscal year, is this going to impact our ability to spend money?
Uh, no, sir. And the reason is we sent our budget by email to the Director of the Field Office and to James Brown, uh, ten days before the beginning of the fiscal year. So basically they have it. We just need to comply with, uh, the requirement to, to upload it to their portal, which for their technical reasons, we weren't able to upload yet.
If you can just keep us posted and maybe bring us an update, um, at the next committee meeting, that'd be great.
Field Office.
Okay, thank you.
I was just, the only, I know we have a meeting, uh, I think a separate conversation to talk about how we're going to approach the FY twenty-five budget request. And that I think will be a helpful conversation. We're going to have to make some decisions pretty quickly on how to perform that.
So, so again, what's, what's the deadline for submitting the FY twenty-five request to the district?
Uh, the deadline is November twenty-first, so it's coming up very quickly. Um, so we will be providing some feedback to the team as they sort of show us what they want to request from, uh, from the district on both operating and capital.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions for the Budget and Audit Committee? So we'll move next to the Committee on Capital Projects, Commissioner Murphy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a few updates to share with folks. First off, I think many of you know, um, our SCP for capital programs, John Stringfield, announced that he's leaving us. Um, and, uh, sorry to see him go, but, uh, glad that he's moving on to something else, uh, exciting for him. Um, and I do want to just take this moment to thank him for the contributions he's made. He's, he's helped move forward a number of projects. Um, and I know, Director, you're starting to think about how to, how to fill that role. The good news is we have some, some good folks on the team who will, uh, got a good bench there that will keep things moving forward in his absence. So, um, in response to some feedback we got at our last meeting from residents, um, you may recall there, there was some questions about how we've been communicating with residents on projects that are slated for redevelopment. And so I know the team is starting to think about developing a communications protocol that will be more sort of forthcoming with information on the status of projects and how they're proceeding or in many cases not proceeding. Um, and I know it's a little bit tricky. I think it's a little bit of a, a, a challenging, um, process for the team because it's, it spans more than just capital projects. This is, you know, something that lots of different, um, departments and parts of the agency need to collaborate on with how we communicate, because this is a very specific aspect of what the agency is, you know, overall communicating to them. So, um, I know they're going to be working with you and getting your feedback on how you've done it in other places. And I'm just, I, it's sort of, I, the committee, we talked about sort of the idea of having a really clear protocol, almost like a checklist, so you can actually just know, are you actually doing all the things you're doing as, you know, on a regular basis? Because it's, it's, I think we as a board, you know, hear the frustration from folks saying, you know, ten years ago, you told me this project was moving forward. It isn't. Why isn't it? And lots of times there's good reasons for that. It's not, there's no conspiracy theory, uh, there's, there's no malicious reason or anything. But we just haven't always done as good a job about communicating with people. So I'm eager for, um, for us to step up our game on that.
And just, I'm excited too, as well, as the leader of the organization, I should be front and center of that at first, to re-sort of reset the table with regard to what, whatever projects we have out there. Perfect example is the CNI initiative the other night when I was over at Lincoln Heights. And I opened up this, this ceremony to talk about, you know, my vision for the agency and how important it was for this project to rebuild the community and more importantly, for the residents to be more involved and engaged. And so I promised some of the residents that would come back and sit down with them to talk about where the project is, hear some of their concerns. And I assure them that they would be, we would be communicating with them on a, on a more frequent basis. I prefer monthly. I mean, it's, even if you have nothing to say other than, hey, hey, we see you, we hear you, what do you have? And or, you know, do events out there. Me and barbecue once in a while or whatever. We do, we're doing in Alexandria all the time. Even if we have anything to do, we would buy some food, go out and sit out with the residents and talk about their ideas about the whole project and they, they enjoyed it. And what it did was it brought more people back to the table to say, hey, listen, oh, this is what's going on. So, yeah, so I'm excited about it. I'll take it.
Great. Um, we're also, and this is sort of a heads up to you. Um, we are, uh, developing some plans for some sort of, for several properties that are kind of being teed up for redevelopment. And they will technically come to us in the form of requests for demolition and disposition. But there, I, I hesitate to put it through that frame because that sort of has a negative connotation. I think what we're actually talking about is kicking off some, uh, redevelopments of projects that is going to result in some much improved conditions for, for tenants. So that we're, we're sort of teeing those up. Uh, will come to us in the next, uh, couple of months. Um, and, uh, Director, you know this, we, we have for some time been talking about developing a portfolio-wide redevelopment strategy. And that's, one of the things I think we've all felt as a board when we arrived here, what, you know, eleven or so months ago, was there were a lot of projects coming at us and we, we had a hard time kind of seeing the big picture, sort of, how did these projects get picked? Why are they prioritized? Why are other ones not? Where are the other ones in the pipeline? And so I think the idea, um, is that if we can sort of, through a process that's transparent, that's explainable to people about why we're focusing on the projects we're going to be focusing on, um, I think that will help explain, uh, to folks why we're prioritizing certain things.
That's the goal, the assessment of the portfolio of us, we did Alexandria when I arrived. And then what I did was I went on a listening tour throughout the city and I had eight meetings. And I laid out, you know, the whole reposition, redevelopment strategy. We had FAQs that, that we passed out, basic questions of residents, because all I'm really concerned about is, can I come back? Am I going to be displaced? You know, and, and, and what type of amenities I'm going to have? Those are, those are general questions. But also I asked, I answered questions about, you know, how it all works, whether it was a subsidy transition, whether it was actually a redevelopment project, also letting them know that, listen, you're going to be involved in the selection of the development partner from, from A to Z. We trained them all up, so yeah, I'm a little aware.
And I think the hope for the, uh, because you know, you know, DC, we're very process heavy and we really want to hear from people, want everyone to feel engaged and have an opportunity to have feedback. So this is almost like a process to have a process. Um, so, but, so I think there's some drafts that have been going around and, and obviously now that you're here, we'll want to get your eyes on those and figure out how to move them forward.
Okay.
Uh, that's it. Uh, other committee members want to weigh in?
You know, I'm, I'm very excited to hear you, to hear your thinking around listening sessions. Um, one thing that was striking to me when we were getting the resident feedback, um, um, earlier in our agenda, um, you know, was this call for the board to actually engage with the community. And we did do listening sessions when we first started out. Um, and, you know, most of the concerns that we hear are standard, they're repeated. Um, and, you know, personally, like that, that format to me is not like helpful or engaging in terms of like planning and strategy. Like if we really truly want to partner with our residents, how can we actually ask them the questions around trade-offs that are real and that we have to make from year to year? So when we're budgeting for, you know, when we're dealing with, um, property maintenance versus redevelopment, um, how can we actually put those questions in front of our residents so they can also participate in evaluating what the trade-offs are and what their preferences are for not just their particular community, but also for the portfolio? So if there are ways in which we can plan for, um, I'm pretty sure there's another requirement for us to go back out to communities sooner rather than later. But whenever that is, if we could do it, um, you know, in partnership with like these strategic questions, these assessment questions that you have, that way we can meet our requirements and, and, and be a part of what you envisioned for, um, engagement with the residents as well.
Commissioner Burbridge, I agree with you one hundred percent. And I think we need to keep upfront, this is about the residents. It's not just about a portfolio. There would be no portfolio without a resident. We need to know what are their needs. We are studying making plans of what needs to be demo, what needs to be disposed of. And when we tell them, it's after the fact, just like with the policies that we're making, these ACOGS, these pet policies. And then we get this pushback and we're stunned that, oh, that's not a good idea. Who actually is sitting at the table? I think myself, especially Commissioner Blackson, who are resident commissioners, we need to know and we need to know before they happen. You know, just like we have these committees, um, that's doing the budget. You, they don't tell you after they approved a budget, correct? They tell you prior to, so you can, uh, have an input in it. And with everything that I'm hearing from the residents, I'm a resident myself, um, I want to be a part of it because it's just like a person that's hungry. You may take me a couple of dollars, that'll work for the day, but how does it help me tomorrow? So when we're hearing all of these things, when do we bring the actual residents in to sit down at the table and not me, not you, not anyone, and tell us what we need? We need better listening sessions. We are the reformed, that's a big word, board. We're not going to do what was historically done because according to HUD, it didn't work and it's not working now. So I just want to reiterate that the residents is the reason we are all at a seat at this table today. Let's get their input, let's value their input and let them be a part of the change that's directly affecting their lives.
So Commissioner, you're exactly right. And I've done this twice in New Orleans as well as Alexandria. Our residents were always at the table. We, even when we, when we do the assessments, they do talk to the residents about the portfolio and what they want, what they want to see, because that helps sort of craft the strategy too, depending on how you sequence them, where you're going to start building first and the whole ball of wax. So trust me, you will have a seat at the table. I got you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Blackson.
Okay. Listen, come one, come all.
That's right.
For that interview, I said, win the crowd and you win your freedom, right? I'm going to win the crowd.
Okay, um, uh, so we're going to move on to the Committee on Operations and Administrative Services, Commissioner Jones.
Actually, we, because we didn't have any procurements, um, to come up, we haven't met, but I would like to see us get like some sort of pipeline of upcoming procurements so that we're not reactionary to everything and, and, um, such a short time to actually process the requests. So we'll know in advance what's coming up and, um, the importance of those procurements.
You got it.
That's one main takeaway from our meetings. Um, that's what occurred at the, the last meeting, a big discussion on that. And then the other thing, I guess we would just all please to hear that, um, there is enough funding just in case there is a government shutdown next week, that, um, all employees will know that. It's communicated to them. But going forward, I think we probably would spend, um, a little bit more time on the administrative side of, um, DCHA, just to understand some of the functionalities and things that happen.
Well, that'd be good because we're going to make some changes anyway. So it'd be good to sit down with you in the committee to talk about some of the changes we're making.
Okay.
So, Commissioner Jones, in addition to, uh, administration, committee also includes operations. So I, I guess, um...
The operations portion is what I'm talking about for DHCA, DOJ. Yeah, we don't have like insight into that.
Right. So, uh, so, yeah, I, I mean, I think, uh, I would like for you to be able to, to use your committee as a, a forum for discussing some of the issues on, you know, operations, including things like, uh, I know, uh, a, a couple of the, um, uh, residents wanted to know about the, uh, rent reasonableness issue and, and how that, uh, it's going to affect them, uh, landlords and, and, um, residents, voucher holders. Uh, so, uh, so things like that, we could talk about at first at the committee level and then bring it to the full board.
You know, thank you for that, Chairman Skinner. Um, I really, you know, as a representative from the Interagency Council on Homelessness, the intersection that like really matters for me is how quickly are we processing eligibility, applications, vouchers? Um, well, how is rent reasonableness impacting the timelines for getting the appropriate approvals and, uh, moving into, uh, units leasing up? These are some areas we were heavily focused on procurement. I understand that that's a really important area and that we needed to do, um, quite a bit to like move things forward. Um, but we really need deep dives into these other areas, um, of the Housing Authority and better understand that at our committee level.
True. And what you're probably going to see too, and I recommend in terms of the change to the board book format, you'll be able to see those on a monthly basis as to how the numbers are moving, whether they're increasing. But we can, I will share that with the committee before we actually finalize it anyway. So you'll get to see the thought process and what goes into trying to summarize the stuff at a higher level, but also providing you with the data that you need, so.
I, I really appreciate that. Something else that I'm reflecting on as we're hearing the, the complaints from the community, I'm assuming that complaints related to like property management and administrative processes are most relevant to our committee. Um, and I don't want to get into the details of specific clients and complaints, but I do want for our committee to understand what the escalation protocol is, who the main points of contact are, what the main buckets of complaints are so that we can understand what the trends are and make sure that we're moving in a direction that addresses the major, you know, the, the, you know, they're, they're going to always be the, what are they called? The, the tails, the one offs, the, the issues that are very specific and very tailored to clients. But I'm assuming most of the complaints are, uh, things that we need to be, um, addressing by standardizing operations and administration.
Although, Rick, I've only been here five days, but I have no... We look so accountable, trust me.
So, Director, I don't know if, if, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we... So Director, I, I don't know if, if, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we did have a process for, uh, uh, following up on issues that, that residents. Yeah, that residents bring before the board, so. And it, and just, um, you know, the staff will contact the, the residents as, as we've said today and follow up. And then we get a report, uh, for the, at the next board meeting on, on this issue, those follow ups.
But the way to prevent that is to put the process in place so we can deal with it on the front end, not have to worry about it, and that's where I'm going.
Okay.
Well, just one, this is a very specific comment, but it's just something that's been on my mind for the last couple of months as we've talked about the rent reasonableness tool. I, I would just love to hear at some point from the team whether, my concern has always been that the rent reasonableness tool may, um. Sort of unintentionally make it harder for folks to find units. And i- if, if that is the case, because we're now offering lower rents than we were. If, if that is impacting about people's ability to find units, I just think I'd love rather, I think we should know that sooner rather than later. So that we can talk to the relevant people to make sure they understand. Uh, there's, I've been around government too long, there's always unintended consequences and that worr- that's one that worries me.
If I may, because I'm getting consistent and constant messages related to the rent reasonableness issue. From the perspective of like case managers that are trying to navigate the rent reasonableness issue. One of the like main points of, or, or one of the main pain points that I've heard articulated that we might not be able to address. Is the fact that rent reasonableness is now dynamic. It is not as simple as, uh, like the, the payment standards or the payment limits by the different neighborhoods and jurisdictions that people can just go by. So now that we've changed to something that's dynamic, that's actually based on whether the, the particular amenities of the unit. The particular comparable, uh, rents in that same building even. That that itself has been like a really big change that people are having a hard time navigating and grappling with. And so in this dynamic space, how do we support, um, our consumers, our landlords? Our case managers that are supporting clients becomes like a really important question.
Good, thank you. Uh, so last but certainly not least, is the Committee on, on Resident Services, uh, is, which is chaired by Commissioner Blackson.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, I'm Commissioner Denise Blackson. Um, the, the Committee on Resident Services, we basically, um, as a resident, also me and Ms. Burbidge, we get a lot of complaints. Um, a lot of concerns with things that residents are experiencing. Um, in their public housing units as well as voucher holders, we get a lot of those complaints. And what we do is we try to bring the correct team to our Resident Services Committee meeting. So when we go back to the meeting with the resident leaders, we can address their issues and concerns and share the direct contacts. Sometimes we would do that by, we now have a new, um, E D. We would do that by having the resident leaders of the different properties meet with the new E D and also share them concerns. And they will bring the team from D C H A to the meeting so they can follow up. So if a resident said, hey, I'm having major maintenance issues and I live in a public housing side. We may tell the E D, we meet with the E D, share those concerns, then we'll have known that Eve and her team come show. So whatever division or department head it is to, um. In the agency, we would try to bring them there before they can follow up. But that's basically what the Resident Services Committee are, we, we get some of the issues and we learn what it is for, we can know. Because we're sitting at the head, if we can't answer the questions, we, you know, it kind of makes us all look bad. If we can't answer the questions or direct the residents to the proper, um, person they should speak with.
As long as, well, Commissioner, Chairman Skinner said earlier, you guys are ambassadors too. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to sum it together very quickly, just talk to you guys and sort of brainstorm about ideas, where we are. What, what we can fix immediately, what are some of the long term goals? Because I, I, Alexandria allowed me to create what I call a robust, uh, resident engagement program, right? I mean, from A to Z, uh, things to do, how we engage them, activities that we do on a regular basis. And I could tell you that Kevin Harris, who's the resident leader over there, he said he was at a meeting here in D C says, and they were saying, so how's this guy, you know? And what did he do? And Kevin says, no man, we're sorry to lose him because, you know, they were very satisfied. So, uh, you guys will see a lot of me. And I was telling Commissioner, uh, Skid, uh, Chairman Skinner the other day, I'm, I'm never in office, I'm going to be out there. I mean, I, I went to Rich's dwellers like that first night, you know, and they were like, you out there already? And so we go, so you'll see a lot of me, we're going to be very engaged, I, I can show you that, so.
We appreciate that, look forward to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackson. Okay, um, let's see, the next item on our agenda is we're going back to public testimony. This time it's the, um, long residents, we're going to chant and testify.
We'll start with Mr. William Jordan, is Mr. Jordan there?
Um. Good afternoon. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, good afternoon, this is William Jordan, a member of the Park Morton Equity Team. And, uh, which was formed back in 2018 as a resident empowerment effort. Um, as part of the Park Morton New Communities effort. So now that we have a, um, capable, skilled, experienced director in place, welcome, Director.
And checks in the mail.
Um, we don't have to pussyfoot around and make excuses, we can just kind of go at it. And that's a welcome because, you know, trying to always be nice and, and play around and, you know. It's just, it's just hard, takes more energy navigating hurt feelings than, uh, getting work done. So I wanted to make a few recommendations, uh, based on my experiences working at Park Morton, uh, under the leadership of Ms. High. Because, uh, you know, I would really suggest you sit down and the whole board really sit down and talk to her and her residents. Because that, that's how I learned from, from that perspective. But first, I say this before, the agency needs an independent, um, ombudsman. That is really independently empowered to work the bureaucracy on behalf of residents. And particularly resident councils. Because one of the issues that you have with communications is really that the agency and the development. Infrastructure wants to weaken resident councils to make development policies work, development projects work easier and policies go through. So if you have strong resident councils, of course, you're going to get pushback. Um, so the agency has deep empowered them in order to make it easy to push policies down. What the agency has failed to understand, they are also partners. And when these entities are strong, then they can work as partners as well and move things quicker when they have to be. So I suggested that a capacity building effort be made, uh, for the resident councils. Starting with each resident council getting $200,000, um, to get going. The second is any, um, new communities, RAD or other development deals. That aren't ready to go into the ground or not in the ground should be scrapped and renegotiated. To give residents equity position in these deals, whether it's 2%, 3%, 4%, 30%, whatever. They should have a position because if they're at the table as partners, you won't have a communications problem the way you have it now. Because they are there, they are part of the process. Uh, then finally, um, referring to D C H E, continues to make investments. That don't directly empower resident families to make them stronger and more economically viable. And every time I go to a D H C E and they use New Markets Tax Credits. It's always supporting some charity effort that has almost nothing to do with directly empowering the families any money. Even if you have affordable housing in this environment, if you don't raise your income, you don't stand a chance. And so to just build housing, to house people and not give them the tools they need to have a better life, it's just not proper. So, uh, Director, please work with us, don't be afraid. Um, the board, please come with us, don't be afraid, but you need an independent ombudsman. This bureaucracy will not work without one, as well as the allied bureaucracies in the city. As many people have just spoken about, it's not just what the agency does, sometimes what D C D does and what, uh, the. Health Department does and, and Human Services. So please consider empowering our independent as well as, um, ombudsman and empowering the resident council. Even if you waste a little bit of money trying to get it up. Stronger the resident councils, the better this agency will be and the better, um, residents will be, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Uh, next is Ms. Patricia Bale. Ms. Bale, are you there?
Okay, this is Gwen Appleworth Rich again, I.
Allow this. Ms. Bale?
Okay, I know, Ms. Bale. I'll circle back to her, Ms. Ashley Diggins. Ashley Diggins? Okay, Ms. Bale. Yes, we can hear you. Now we can't, I think you're having some audio issues. But I'll try to move on and come back to you. Uh, Ashley Diggins?
Okay, uh, Daniel Del Palago?
Ms. Bale?
Ms. Bale, I can hear you now, can you continue?
Yes ma'am, there seems to be a lack of communication between the owners and the Housing Choice Voucher Program. My tenant received a notice effective 6/1/23. That certain members in the house were to be removed due to primary tenants being downsized. To date, we are not aware of what has been done to ensure the removal of certain tenants. And we have tried numerous times to reach our housing specialists. What options are available to us now? Did you hear me?
Yes, good afternoon, this is Hamarrett Gabrias, I will reach out to you, uh, to get the specifics and, and make sure you get connected to the right staff.
Okay, would you say your name again, please?
It's Hamarrett Gabrias. But I have your contact, email you, I'll email you.
Okay. All right, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bale. Uh, Mr. Del Palago, I see you there, you can, uh, start, please.
Thank you, good afternoon, and my apologies, I'm on a bus to pick up my daughter, so I apologize for the background noise. But, um, my name is Daniel Del Palago, I work with Empower D C T, who, uh, to, to Director, Mr. Pettigrew. Um, I just wanted to follow up on something that came up. Uh, and I'm glad to hear that there is a communication plan or some sort of communication being developed. To ex- better explain the development process, the redevelopment process for residents. I was, uh, it was interesting to hear how Thor Nelson essentially broke down the process. At the recent roundtable that, um, the council's housing committee had. I think that that's really important to let residents know, we should err on the side of giving residents as much information as possible. Instead of limiting, um, the information, uh, that they get. We've heard things like, we shouldn't just be to meet, we've heard things like, um. At, these are at actual meetings where, uh, a, a D C H A representative will say, well, that board makes decisions about your life. So it disempowers residents and once again, this is something I harp on all the time. It widens the trust gap that is really at the heart of the issues that ail this agency. So I think the more information that we can provide to residents to let them know about the problems with financing that exist. That developers are not coming with financing plans, uh, to the many projects that are on the front burner now. To the fact of, uh, how prices change just because of time. And then any zoning issues that may exist is important for residents to know about and to be involved in. And then of course for them to have a seat at the table for this. So there's many, um, uh, uh, aside from that, I did want to flag, I've gotten over the past couple of days, several calls. About vouchers and people's inability to communicate with anybody, confusion about. You, about, um, recertifications and vouchers not being approved or taken away. But then another, uh, a person from the agency calls and says, you know, come to the voucher meeting. Um, so just wondering if there can be a better streamlined process and actual contacts that people can connect to. When, uh, they are reaching out about their, their voucher, uh, issues, given that so many people are being called because of the wait lists. Uh, thank you and I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Craig London, Mr. London?
Yes, hi, thank you very much, uh, my name is Craig London. I'm a board member of the D C Housing Providers Association, D C H P A. Our members operate more than 10,000 voucher units in the city. Uh, for starters, we'd like to welcome Executive Director Pettigrew. We've heard a lot of great things about you with your work in Alexandria. And we are looking forward to working closely with you to solve problems and make whatever improvements we can. Um, secondly, um, I would like to, uh, point out that, uh, Director Pettigrew, you have some excellent problem solvers on your staff. And I would like to, uh, name some of them by name that, that we know have been very helpful in recent days. Um, Devon Queen, Ebony Thomas, Kurt Batson, Ms. Gabrias who's behind you, Okeisha Pompey, Fatima Coroma, Ashida Gore, Gail Daniels, uh, and Mary Johnson. Just in, I know that's just a, a sample of some of the excellent people that you have working for you. Um, the second, uh, actually the first request that I have is, um, we would like to see you reinstate what we did about. About a year ago, we had some, uh, landlord working groups. Where they allowed some of the, the housing providers and some of the executive directors, I'm not the executive directors, some of the executives and, and senior managers of D C H A. Meeting on a monthly basis to work together to discuss, identify and solve problems. Um, very specifically, we have developed a short list of zero cost solutions to some problems. That we've identified that may not, uh, be always, uh, get communicated to the senior staff. Um, the second is, um, we would like to, uh, set a meeting up to talk to you about the Fruman Bill. Which is a piece of legislation that is moving its way through the city council. This bill is, uh, going to have extremely negative impact on the voucher program. Uh, the, the goal of, the goal of the, uh, of this legislation is to reduce the voucher rents by 20 to 40%. To line them up with the lowest level of rent control that we had decades ago on some of these units. This would throw out rent reasonableness and be, make all those efforts a waste of time. And this is going to crush, uh, the tenants that are now going to be competing with, uh, with market rate applicants. Who have, uh, high credit scores, um, steady jobs, high income. And our tenants are going to be on a, on an absolutely, uh, major disadvantage to get these units. This is an urgent matter and we do request a meeting to discuss this as soon as possible. Um, so again, welcome aboard and we wish you the best of luck and we do know that you have a great staff working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. London, I'll be in touch to Courtney.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next is Mr. Lee Simon, is just Simon?
Hi, how are you? Um.
I'm just a second.
I want to echo a little bit of what Craig said, uh, I wanted to testify about legislation 250227. The Rent Stabilization Protection Amendment Act of 2023, uh, proposed by Councilmember Fruman. Uh, this bill would remove the exemption from rent control, Housing Choice Voucher Program tenants currently receive. The exemption is the only incentive D C offers for housing providers to take H C V P tenants over market rate tenants that may be better qualified. If this passes, it'll be catastrophic for the H C V P program and the ability for H C V P tenants to find quality housing. As legal aid states in their written testimony, it is important that the council be aware of the almost certain unintended consequences. This legislation will make it that much harder for voucher holders to find housing. D C H A needs to be more. D C H A needs to be more aggressively opposing this legislation. During a recent D C H A oversight hearing, D C H A responded neutrally about this legislative legislation, stating that the potential effects needed to be looked at more. This is not strong enough for the proposed legislation that would have such a devastating effect on D C H A stakeholders, both tenants and housing providers. D C H A needs to have a universal unwavering response and strong opposition to this legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Ms. April. That concludes our testimony. Mr. Chairman.
Um this is going up the Lewis Rich. I'm trying to get the name of the lady that says she's gonna get in touch with me.
Hi, Ms. Lewis Rich. I've emailed you already. So if you can check your email, but I'll call you as well. This is Hamarrett Gabrias.
I'm sorry, we have one more. Sam Harris. I'm sorry, Francis. Sam Sam Francis, are you there?
Hold on, hello, hello. I was trying to see who's supposed to get back with Octavia Dawson, cuz I really must need to upgrade to me a two-bedroom and
We will email you or or text you. We have your contact information. Okay, I believe that's all of the um testimony for today. Again, thank uh everyone for coming before the board and providing testimony. Um you know, we get a lot of information and we have a lot uh of work to do in terms of follow-up, following up on some of the some of the issues. So the last item on the agenda is uh what we said was commissioner concerns or commissioner time. And again, the idea was just to have a time for commissioners to bring up any issues of of concerns that we have not already uh talked about. Uh I was gonna bring up the issue of rent reasonableness, but I think we've already discussed that previously. Um so uh at this time, I'll just go around and ask if anyone else has anything that they wanted to to bring up, per se. Commissioners, someone?
I made a little note. I have concerns because over and over again, I keep hearing about retaliation. And after thinking about it, um retaliation is um happening because of neglect, lack of communication, and the void of professionalism. Let's take for an example the recertification process. Number one, the application is outdated. If you take your time to read it, parts of it is degrading and it's belittling and I it's just a a spigot off from being inhuman. And when we do these recertification policies, I'm kind of puzzled here. So you get back with me. If you do them annually and biannually, how come we have so many people that's improperly housing? Uh it seems like moving um from the past, the only thing that happens with the recertification, they wanna know about the money. Doesn't that also tell you the size of the members that's in the family? Why do we have some families that has a five-bedroom, four-bedroom, and only has one person? Yet we holler there's a problem about occupancy. Shouldn't that be captured with the uh recertification? I either that is the whole purpose of the recertification. Um the agency has failed in processing them in a timely fashion. And then when they don't do their part, other resident present becomes vocal, you wanna threaten them with eviction, which really you should do the person that he's being removed from your position. Um the policies that we do, the pet policy went affected two thousand and five, correct? We did not, I know that. We did not enforce it until twenty-twenty-three. And now you'll get, uh shouldn't, I heard the last director Donald said, we're gonna grandfather them in. Do you understand what grandfathering that means? It means, okay, you've been here, you're a part of. Why are we now putting up sense and opposition and you better hush her, I'll take your dog? That's retaliation. Um the lack of professionalism, I have experienced it cuz I always use my home phone and never use the D C government phone. Some of the uh executive uh staff members, not the executive board, but they talk like, yeah, hello, well, and the resident already said they're gonna send in a meeting. I'm in a meeting, let me call you back. I shouldn't have to say this is Commissioner Burbidge and all of a sudden, hi, Commissioner, what can I do? I don't like it. I think it's unprofessional, but yet the residents have to suffer this. Another problem I see is um security. And I'm talking explicitly about the A D A five oh four buildings. That's where we have our seniors and our most vulnerable residents. You have Ponziers. They don't have S P Os. I spoke with someone and they said, well, they need to renegotiate the contract. Now, before you do these contracts, have again, you met with the residents to see what their needs are? Because if you just need somebody in a uniform, hey, let's use the uh resident, the you know, the program where we can train our own and just have them sit there. If they have no powers, isn't a jurisdiction thing, they can't come behind the boot. So you're saying I can actually get beat down and the security that you have in place can just watch, but they can't leave their spots. That's not a good thing. That's just throwing good money after bad money because it's been this way continuously. I made some little notes, just bear with me here. Um the other thing is with resident service, I love them, I think they're doing great, but we need some employment to become self-sufficient that offer transferable skills. I'm looking for a job. I don't, I can't stand outside all day with a orange flag. I don't wanna know how to do construction. We have problems with the call center. How come we can't make that an in-house thing? How come we cannot train the residents, give them stifens, or give them initiatives? See, if you want the community to to flourish, it gotta start within. If when I come home, there's grass that's been unkempt, there's trash everywhere, I'mma just throw down my solar can to join the group. We have to reinstate pride and dignity and integrity back to the residents. We have to put them on the top of the totem pole. So when they talk about retaliation, this can be a contributing factor. The lack of professionalism, and now y'all might get rid of me after this one. But I'mma say it anyway. Just like the residents that call and we say we get back with them. Why don't let's start accountability with making ourselves accountable. How come we don't have a deadline? I've seen the same people month after month after month after month with the same complaint and I hear the same reply. I'mma get back with you. How? Why don't we get back with them with something concrete? How long does it take to know she got rats, he got roaches? How long does it take this person to say, unfortunately, I feel sorry for what you're going through, but we have completed. There's nothing else we can do. And perhaps if you wanna escalate it, you need to take another route. But just telling us and we saying the same thing, we always say, I get back with you, you know? Uh we have to do better. And this is why our structure and our culture as far as the agency is so messed up because people have been doing, I'm sorry, people have not been doing. There have been a disservice and a disconnect, and until we include the residents who we serve, you don't know their needs. You can assume, you don't know what they stand in need of. You think building a new building is gonna make it people self-sufficient? It's go, I heard about those shiny appliances and the new things. Ain't that how they got Manhattan from the Indians, shiny glittering things? So I say things in in a funny way to lighten up atmosphere, but I'm really serious about this. I am really trusting you, Director and Deputy Director, to do something different. You know, there's a new sheriff in town, okay? Bring your guns and have them ready. I don't think you're gonna have to pull the trigger, but let people know you're not here cuz you're handsome. You're here to bring us a change. We should not have this. Let's start with having a filter where before it gets to this part, oh, and the other thing, that's retaliation. You wait till the last minute, the day before, you call a resident and wanna know what they testified about. That makes people feel this small. You wasn't concerned when they told you for six straight months, so why you calling now? That's not how we do it. And we do, as Mr. Jordan says, need someone to come in who is unbiased, who is not a part of the picture and can say, I did troubleshooting for a long time. Going into government agencies acting like I'm a regular employee, couldn't have lunch with you, you know, do any of that, and then saying what's wrong. And and eighty-five percent of the time, it was the managers. It was the executive staff because they didn't have any consequences. They didn't have anyone to answer to. I wanna get out like you guys while the sun's still up. But I just want you to know, these are the concerns that I hear over and over again. So let's start by saying, when we have, we just said, I'mma get back with you. That that's just like saying the check's in the mail. When, how? When you're gonna get back with me? Next month, will I still be here? And when the staff do these calls, put something in writing on black and white is is wonderful. Oh, and speaking of black and white, when we do the relocations and the re- right to return, they wanna see that in writing cuz your word don't mean nothing, your mouth just moving. But you're not giving anybody anything concrete. We need to see a change. We need to see something done like you say, quickly, fast, like yesterday. And I appreciate you. I believe in in you. You know, I don't trust a lot of people, but I'm trusting like I trust this reform board. They have showed a lot of hard work. Uh the residents may see it, but it's a totally different atmosphere. They are concerned, and while they take care of the policies, we gonna take care of the people. That's all right with you?
Let me just say this, I appreciate your tip, what you say, but also I have to earn their trust.
Exactly.
And that's my job to earn the trust of the boards, but more importantly, the residents, cuz I do understand that, and that starts with me. So trust me when I tell you, I tell you this, get back to them, we will get back to them. The test, they have to tell you already, the last five days, I'm closing stuff out. So accountability is a top by chart, as well as customer service.
I just, I appreciate that we can do better, but I do wanna just say a couple of things cuz I I I worry that sometimes people are listening and they don't have context for some of this stuff. I mean, I know, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that people are desperately at the at the housing authority are talking to people before they come on and saying, can I help you solve your problem? They're doing everything they can to not have them testify, and for whatever reason, fair or not, those people choose to testify. So I know we're doing that. And the other thing I think I just wanna say for the record is, you know, we usually get a a write-up at the following month saying this has happened, and I read those. And what is comes very clear to me when you read those is that what we hear is often, you know, the tip of the iceberg to the story, and there's a lot more to it, and it's complicated and it has to get worked through. So I just don't wanna, I don't wanna walk away leaving people, anyone, you guys especially, cuz you guys are the new guys on the block. I don't want you thinking that somehow, you know, people here aren't working on this stuff. They are. You you guys have been around the block for housing authority. You know how complex these issues are.
Yeah, it happens at every housing authority, number one. I mean, too, I think the commissioner's right. If you document it the appropriate way, then 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 that's our way to push back and say, listen, back again, but here's what we discussed, and such such a day, and such a time, or we came out, we have the work order, it shows that the work that you described was done. As long as we have the evidence to put it back, uh some people are just gonna continue to come anyway, but we 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 understand how it works. It's not like I'm looking here to go roughshod and start pushing people out the door. No, no.
Okay, Commissioner Sol.
Thank you. Um I was actually initially going to recommend that um this section uh be joined with um the report out from the committees. Um because what I, especially I was taking notes, um Commissioner Burbidge, from your um you know, because a lot of the issues that are being raised are actually directly pertinent to the committees and and the work that we need to be uh looking at. So for example, I know section three has come up a number of times in our committee, and so now I'm I I wrote down employment and entrepreneurship as being a key part of what our committee needs to include and look at. And so I I think it might make sense to actually bundle the two together so that we're doing the committee report outs, and then as commissioners flag their concerns, the committees know that, you know, and can treat that almost as a referral, something to look into, something to talk to um you know, staff members about at the next committee meeting.
Okay, anyone else?
I'd just like to say that I know you agree, and one of the reasons I voted for you is because you wanna see people better themselves. You wanna see people like yourself who grew up in public housing to, you know, move up and get the opportunities that you deserve, and you can work toward it. And I think uh I appreciate that philosophy being brought in here by someone who has actually experienced it in their own life and knows a little bit about it, about how to do that, or or a lot about how to do that. And I want, that's one of the reasons I joined the board is because that's been what, you know, we've put two thousand people in homeownership that never, nobody in their family ever owned a home. So, and we can still do that. You know, that's just one thing. So I'm really excited about what we can do to really create this ladder again where people aren't just sitting and waiting and sitting and waiting to, but that they themselves are getting enabled, they're helping, they're getting the support they need to move forward to their potential.
I'm a resident guy. I can say that right now. I really am, and you see. Anything we can do creatively, I like, I like ideas. I mean, and I tell them to have a lot of time, bring me ideas, right? Just don't be afraid to throw it out there and and more importantly, talk to the residents about what their ideas are. I mean, that's the only way you're gonna get there, but we'll get there.
Okay, good. So this has been a very robust meeting.
And I took my word earlier.
So uh one more thing I I wanted to mention in terms of 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 committees. Uh at the the recent oversight uh hearing before the the council housing committee, I was asked about uh the requirement in the Star Board legislation setting up this board uh to uh make recommendations to the mayor and council about a successor board. So this this board is scheduled to be in place for two years until the end of twenty-twenty-four. But by July of twenty-twenty-four, uh we're supposed to make recommendations again to the council and mayor on um a successor board. What what should the the permanent board uh look like after uh we sunset? And so I've asked uh Commissioners Lee, Jones, and Harris to uh form an an ad hoc committee uh to begin looking at that issue and help us to be, to you know, to frame that issue and and begin to think about what recommendations we might make to the council and and uh mayor uh in terms of uh what a permanent board uh would look like after we sunset. Okay, uh there are no other announcements?
Can I say something? I would like to say something. Hello?
No, uh we're gonna close the meeting. The next board meeting is um the annual meeting uh of the board. It's December thirteen, twenty-twenty-three at one P M. That'll be done via webex. Nation regarding viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at W W W dot D C housing dot org. Uh so with that, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second?
Second.
Okay, the most, the the meeting, I'm sorry, the meeting is adjourned, uh and the time is three oh eight.